Wait, make my announcement for the executive session. Okay. All right, we've got two items on the agenda plus executive session. The second item has actually been withdrawn, so we will begin with the first item, which is electronic signature ordinance. I don't see any over there, sorry.
This is really in response to the rest of the world kind of passing us by and a lot of individuals that we are doing business with assuming we're going to accept these. And under the state of Oklahoma, we can. There's both a federal electronic signature act, the E-Sign Act that was passed in June of 2000, and then in that year, Oklahoma made effective the Uniform Electronic Transactions Act, which allows for government agencies, which includes in Oklahoma municipalities, to set up their own rules and regulations requiring accepting electronic signatures. Currently, Norman's policy is we accept wet signatures for contracts, memorandums of understanding, any documents that we engage in business with. A lot of those documents, we also require to be notarized or attested to. So there's sort of a belt and suspenders act of kind of ensuring authority for the individuals who are signing our documents that they are engaging with the city. The state statute requires that both parties agree to do electronic signatures, which for Norman is usually the other party's asking and expecting that we'll accept their electronic signature, and we are not doing that yet. The state statute does not require authentication measures for electronic signatures, and authentication measures means where you either set up a password so you can access the document or you have a separate passcode that you enter to access it, or you have a specific link that you use to get to the document that's sent to the individual, and those are forms of authentication. Norman's choosing not to do that because a lot of the individuals that we engage in business with, the identity and the authorization of that individual has been clear from the prior transactions. The state statute has actually denied the ability to refuse to accept the legal effect or enforceability of an electronic signature, which has put the city of Norman kind of in a bad position because we are telling people we want wet signatures, be it the state statute is out there really denying that we need to require that. So we're really just trying to get in conformance with what the state statute is. Our proposed ordinance is codifying the ability for the city to accept electronic signatures in specific situations where both parties to the transactions have agreed, where we require a signature or written record, and where the federal and state law allows that. There are some documents the state statute does not allow, like wills, deeds, probate actions, which for the most part, the city's not engaged in. We'll continue to require notarizations and attestations on most of our documents to ensure their validity, but we're again not doing the password or the other authentication measures because through the course of our business, the identities of the individuals signing will be known, and that'll serve as authentication. Also, the notarization can be done electronically as well. We can receive that attestation, the authorization signatures electronically as well. Again, the state statute allows government agencies, which their definition includes municipalities, to determine if they'll accept electronic signatures. A lot of other cities and public entities, including the University of Oklahoma, are utilizing electronic signatures and again expecting that the city of Norman will do the same. It's becoming more difficult to get the wet signatures on documents that the city's currently requiring.
Does this mean the stack of things I have to sign at the end? No, that, okay.
Just means they'll be printed off for your signature instead of, you know, trying to have them run wet signatures over on Tuesday, right?
So, I do, auto pin. All right, well, it's nice to see us move into this part of the 21st century. So, here, here. Any other questions? All right, pretty cut and dry. Thank you for the presentation. And as I mentioned, when we were calling to order, the second item has been withdrawn. It's not ready for discussion quite yet, so now we will entertain a motion to enter executive session.
That was what it was for.
Oh, I read that wrong. Onto the second item. No executive session later. Okay, who's presenting on item number two?
That is the executive session.
Why am I so confused right now? Sorry, I gave blood earlier and I'm still a little woozy.
Get her some orange juice.
The piece of pizza really helped, but, okay.
No, it was the executive session to update on the groundwater blending project. Yeah, sorry. As it turns out, the update that staff's all day with that is not quite ready yet.
All right, well, this study session is adjourned. See you all at 6:30. We can all go get dinner if you wanted to at this point.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax and Increment Finance Authority meeting of November 9th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is approval of the minutes. Consideration of approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of the minutes as follows. City Council Minutes of October 26, 2021. Norman Utility Authority Minutes of October 26, 2021. Norman Municipal Authority Minutes of October 26, 2021. Norman Tax and Increment Finance Authority Minutes of October 26, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item two is consideration of approval, acceptance, acknowledgement, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of Proclamation 2122-12. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Thursday, November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Thursday, November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day in the City of Norman. Whereas, the City of Norman honors the contributions, sacrifices, and valor of the men and women who served in the armed forces. And whereas, the Veterans Day holiday initially commemorated the end of World War I, which came on the 11th hour on the 11th day of the 11th month in 1918. One year later, Americans celebrated the first Armistice Day, and it became a national holiday in 1938. In 1954, President Eisenhower renamed it Veterans Day to honor and commemorate veterans of all wars. And whereas, we recognize 18.2 million living veterans across the United States during at least one war as of 2018. And whereas, 9% of veterans are women. Whereas, with five military installations across the state of Oklahoma, Oklahoma has a high veteran and active military population. And whereas, the Armed Forces Reserve Center's direct presence in Norman provides a significant connection and service to our country and state's armed forces. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2021, as Veterans Day in the City of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in honoring the contributions and sacrifices of our veterans to our freedom and way of life. I'd like to recognize Sergeant Bradley Cooney with the Oklahoma National Guard, who is also a lifetime Norman resident and the careers counselor for Norman Public Schools, to accept the proclamation and thank the council. Come on up. And you're welcome to say a few words.
They did say I need to say something. So, get ready to be dazzled. It's truly a privilege to accept this proclamation in honor of all those who have served in the armed forces of the United States, and for those who have served and those who are serving today. Being a lifetime Norman resident, this means a great deal to me to be in front of all of you this evening. This proclamation is incredibly meaningful to our organization and the military as a whole. In this time of division in our society, I believe we can come together to respect and honor those who have served this country, past and present. Those who are still with us today and those who are not. Like many kids growing up in Oklahoma, I was terrified of tornadoes. But I always felt better after a tornado had passed and I saw the National Guard was on the scene within a very short amount of time. So I joined the National Guard to help my state and community during times that had scared me so much as a child. And now, I've spent more than over a decade responding to natural disasters around our great state. Tornadoes, snowstorms, ice storms, wildfires, floods, and most recently the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm truly grateful that I get to accept this proclamation on behalf of an organization I care so much for, and sincerely humbled that I get to accept it from the community that is closest to my heart. The Oklahoma National Guard's mission is to answer the call whenever the community needs us. Our motto is "Live here, serve here." We are an organization made up of Oklahomans dedicated to helping Oklahomans in our neighboring states during their darkest times. I accept this proclamation today not only on behalf of the National Guard, but for service members of every branch of the military. This proclamation is for the people who raise their right hand and swear to defend this country. For all of those who wanted to make a difference. For those who have made countless sacrifices so others wouldn't have to do the same. To those of you who have served, thank you. To those of you who have family who have served, thank you. To those of you who have supported us, thank you. And to all of you from this Norman boy, thank you.
Sergeant Cooney, here's that proclamation. Speaking of Veterans Day, city offices will be closed on Thursdays, but please join us for the parade at 2:00 PM at Reeves Park, followed by a ceremony at 3:00 PM. Item three is consideration of approval, acceptance, acknowledgement, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of Proclamation 2122-13. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Saturday, November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming Saturday, November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Norman. Whereas, the City of Norman, Oklahoma celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States administration, there are currently 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees. They are responsible for 65.1% of the new net jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas, 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small. 85% of them also encourage friends and family to do so too. And whereas, the City of Norman supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, the City of Norman has celebrated Small Business Saturday in collaboration with the Norman Chamber of Commerce, Visit Norman, and dozens of our local small businesses each year since 2015. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore I, Bria Clark, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 27th, 2021, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Norman, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. I'd like to recognize Ms. Mandy Hawes, who's from Sooner Bowling Center and president of the Norman Chamber of Commerce, to accept the proclamation and thank the council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's nice to be back and on this side. Thank you for this important recognition. I know each of you understand the importance of shopping local, but it's critical this time of year that we drive home the need to support our locally owned and managed businesses. Besides managing my family-owned business, Sooner Bowl, I also have the pleasure of serving as Chair of the Board for the Norman Chamber of Commerce this year. I can boldly say that retail is alive and well in Norman. At the Chamber, we often talk about brick and click businesses. Our businesses are modernizing and transforming the way they deliver goods and services to our customers. Besides being the lifeblood of our community, local businesses are the great equalizer and still offer the best path forward to achieving the American dream. As a female businessperson, I'm proud to let you know, studies suggest, retail is the most popular industry for women-owned small businesses. The last 18 months have been challenging for all of us. On the bright side, the pandemic has also brought an increased interest in shopping small and keeping dollars in our communities. The last year and a half of staying home has given us all a deeper appreciation for our community and shown us to not take anything for granted either. Local shops are at an advantage for post-pandemic shopping. As challenging as the last year has been to us, it has also set us up to come out of it stronger, with customers focused on supporting them, seeing their value, and seeking out all the benefits local shopping brings to our daily lives. A safe place for us to connect and grow stronger communities. On behalf of all the small businesses in Norman, thank you so much, and I will gladly accept this.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind everyone that Oklahoma is the only state in the nation that ties cities to sales tax the way that we do to support our general fund, so shopping local is arguably more important in the state of Oklahoma than anywhere else. So, thank you for your leadership in supporting small businesses. Former Councilmember Hawes. Now on to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet the approval of all councilmembers, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Items 4 through Item 23 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place Items 4 through 23 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to place Items 4 through 23 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to place Items 4 through 23 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item four, ordinance 2122-15 upon first reading by title. Rezoning property from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to Spud, Simple Planned Unit Development District, and removing the south 152.5 feet of Lot 2, Block 10 of Pickard Acres addition. Urban Office Commercial District to Spud, Simple Planned Unit Development District. Item five, ordinance 2122-15 upon first reading by title. Item five, Ordinance 2122-26, upon first reading by title, an ordinance authorizing electronic signatures and electronic records that comply with the requirements of the Oklahoma Uniform Electronic Transaction Act and city policy and city transactions and communications. Item six, Mayor's appointments as follows: The Development Oversight Committee for Tiff District Number Two, Rob Noran, Ward Three, Lance Van Zant, Ward Six, Nick Millarino, Superintendent of MPS or his designee; The Environmental Control Advisory Board, Laney Phillips, Ward Six, Dane Hines, Ward Seven, Tom Fightmaster, Ward Six; Green Belt Commission, Natalie Rocher, Ward Two, Christina Wickoff, Ward Four; Historic District Commission, Taber Halford, Ward Four, Mitch Baroff, Ward Four, Michael Zorba, Ward Six; Norman Election Commission, Ty Hardeman, Ward Four; Planning Commission, Lark Zink, Ward Seven, Stephen McDaniel, Ward Three, Kevin Parker, Ward One; Public Art Board, Tara Burnett, Ward One. Item seven, the City Managed Contract and Change Order Report and directing the filing thereof. Item eight, a grant in the amount of $40,196.21 for the purchase of one Zoll X Series monitor defibrillator with accessories from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Board of Directors to be used by the Norman Fire Department and budget appropriation. Item nine, expenditure number seven for On Call Contract 1314-102 with Smith Roberts Land Services Incorporated in the amount of $29,005 to provide additional right-of-way acquisition services for the Porter Avenue Streetscape 2019 Bond Project. Item 10, change order number two to Contract 2021-5 with Nash Construction Company decreasing the contract by $27,814.96 for a revised contract amount of $700,510.54 and adding 146 calendar days to the contract for the Pickard Avenue Reconstruction Project, final acceptance of the project, and final payment in the amount of $35,025.53. Item 11, change order number one to Contract 2021-120 with Rudy Construction Company increasing the contract amount by $20,734.80 for a revised contract amount of $155,584.80 for the 2021 Campus Corner Capital Improvement Project, final acceptance of the project, final payment in the amount of $27,477.30, and budget transfer as outlined in the staff report. Item 12, bid contract and associated bonds with Parathon Construction Company, LLC, in the amount of $205,225 for the Grover Lane Reconstruction Project and resolution-granting tax-exempt status. Item 13, Contract 2122-6 with Haskell Lemon Construction Company for the FYE 22 Bridge Maintenance Program and final payment of $7,552.45. Item 14, Contract 2122-43 with IBS Incorporated Doing Business as Angel Trax in an amount not to exceed $122,473.62 to provide a public transportation onboard surveillance system for the City of Norman Public Transportation Fleet and budget appropriation as outlined in the staff report. Item 15, bid contract and associated bonds between the Norman Utilities Authority and Wynn Construction for the Water Treatment Plant Carbon Dioxide Replacement Tank Project and authorizing the Utilities Director to purchase materials on behalf of the contractor. Item 16, Contract 2122-62, a contract between the Norman Utilities Authority and Smith Roberts Baldischweiler, LLC, in the amount of $59,000 to provide engineering services associated with the South Lake Edition Waterline Replacement Project. Item 17, Contract 2122-69, a real estate purchase and sale agreement with the Draybeck Trust for the acquisition of property needed for the James Garner Norman Forward Flood to Acres Project. Item 18, Contract 2122-70, an agreement with the Pioneer Library System for library services, facilities, and maintenance effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Item 19, Resolution 2122-48, a resolution transferring $146,660 from the 48th Avenue Northwest Project from Indian Hills Road to one mile north of the 34th Street and Moore and applying funds to the Tecumseh Road Project from 156th Avenue Northeast to 180th Avenue Northeast. Item 20, Resolution 2122-55, a resolution giving the Secretary of the Cleveland County Election Board notice of municipal and municipal runoff elections for 2022. Item 21, Resolution 2122-56, authorizing joint petition settlement of workers' compensation claim of Henry Baskefield. Item 22, Resolution 2122-59, transferring $950,000 from various capital projects in order to provide funding for asbestos remediation for the development center. Item 23, Resolution 2122-60, a resolution declaring the City Council, Norman Municipal Authority, my Utilities Authority, and Norman Tax and Encuents Finance Authority meetings scheduled for November 23rd and November 28th, 2021, to be canceled, and the City Council meeting shall be scheduled for November 30th, 2021. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
I should approve.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Lisa Wells, Executive Director of Pioneer Library System, to make her presentation related to Item 18.
Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity to visit with you briefly this evening. I've brought with me some packets. In the packet you'll have our annual report, our new strategic plan, and Pioneer's investment in the three Norman libraries that we partner with. The numbers you will see, our investment for this past fiscal year was just over $4.1 million, including salaries, payroll taxes, technology, and materials. Additionally, our citizens are able to take advantage of $1.3 million in additional electronic resources for the system, including digital resources, electronic books, and other downloadable collections. And then we spend just over $278,000 on databases, some of which are really important for students. We have online tutoring from 2 to 11, seven days a week, and then also some market segmentation data for businesses. On the backside of that sheet, you'll see the different investment for each of the libraries. And while the numbers are important, I want to talk to you just a little bit about the libraries and how proud we are to be partnering with the city to operate them, three beautiful facilities. And for the last several years, we've been using net promoter scores. So the net promoter score is a loyalty metric used to gauge how likely you are, on a scale of 0 to 10, to recommend the library to your friends and family. And we all know the last 18 months have been different, to say the least. However, the Norman Libraries' net promoter scores for October were 88.7 at East, 88.6 at Central, and 88.1 at West, and over the last 12 months collectively, an 89 net promoter score. And to add some perspective to the numbers, Apple has a net promoter score of 69, Chick-fil-A 72, Target 54, and Chipotle 53, and your libraries an 89. We have amazing staff, they're all very happy to be doing work in our community. And while the numbers are important, I think the customer testimonials really bring the heart and the emotion to the equation. And we've been collecting customer stories for a couple of years, and I looked back through the archive, and I wanted to share just a few of them. And I'm going to make it really short. An unemployed citizen without internet who visited the library to research jobs, work on his resume, receive interview tips, ultimately gaining employment and coming back to tell the librarians that he got a job he really wanted. A student who completed her coursework, passed her certification test, and was hired as a respiratory therapist at Norman Baptist Integris, and the library filled the role of proctor and encourager throughout her journey. An older customer who lost her social security card and needed help navigating the system for a replacement, a process that took over two hours and six librarians, but ultimately she left, she was happy, and she could file for some benefits that would allow her to pay her rent that month. And finally, just a couple with medical conditions that limited public interactions who used curbside pickup to visit with the librarian and maintain a sense of normalcy during the pandemic. As we continue to work toward our mission of inspiring innovation, engagement, and learning in our communities, we're providing world-class service to the citizens of Norman. Together, we're filling employment gaps, raising the next generation of leaders, and providing opportunities for all Norman citizens. I hope you will make the library your resource as well, and we look forward to seeing you at one of your three amazing libraries. Thank you, Mayor Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Love our libraries. All right, are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Councilmember Holman.
I just had a question about item number 11.
Scott Sturt, sorry, Scott Sturt, City Engineer.
Thank you, Scott. This is just about the contract, about the improvements to Campus Corner, and this includes the recent parking meters, new parking meters and all that stuff, is that part of that?
That was actually a separate contract, but we did work in conjunction with that contract to help do the repair around those spaces, but that was done by our Traffic Division and Public Works, along as part of the lighting changes that they're making down there also.
Okay. I just wanted to double-check on that part of it and see what this was covering, since we've had several kind of projects going on down there with the lighting and the parking meters. And wanted to see, one of the issues that I've noticed down there is, since we removed the parking meters, you can still see where they used to be because the concrete is red and we replaced the holes with normal-colored concrete. And it's one of those little details that I've noticed, I've had a few merchants ask about to see, are we gonna be replacing those, and just others that have been interested in the lighting stuff and some of the changes. So I wasn't sure if we're done or if we're gonna go back, just since we have so many tourists and different things that come to Campus Corner, it's kind of like the front porch of the community in a way. That and Main Street, those little details like that can make a difference. So I wasn't sure if this will address that or if some future...
And like I said, we did work in conjunction with them to try to repair some of those areas, but there was some overlap there. I can certainly go back, follow up with staff, check with our Traffic Division, and we can follow up on that, and we can go back and make whatever necessary repairs are necessary to make that look good. With the amount of money that we've spent, we definitely want our Campus Corner to be a standout area, and we were able to do a lot of good work down there.
Absolutely.
But we'll definitely follow up on that and see what we can do to fix those situations.
I definitely appreciate that. It is much nicer without having all the parking meters on the sidewalk. It's such a narrow sidewalk anyway, and now that those are gone, it's much easier to move about, it looks a lot nicer, and I think the new lighting is gonna look really nice as well, just in addition to all the other stuff going on. So I appreciate it, Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
I just wanted to follow up on this agenda item as well, and really just point out that this has been a really positive working relationship with our business community and our merchants on Campus Corner and the City of Norman to take a really close look at where the gaps have been in getting everything repaired and up to snuff. So I appreciate the attention to that little detail because all those little details really do make a difference, and just the collaboration that we've had this year to get all of these things in place in a fairly short order of time, and appreciate the support of the council in getting that done. I also just wanted to make a brief comment about the Pioneer Library System. I'm a proud Pioneer Library System Ambassador, I spent 15 years with the Pioneer Library System, with colleagues that are still going strong, and are leaders in our library system still today. And I just think it's important to acknowledge the successful partnerships that we have with many of our operators, with our city buildings. Thanks to the Norman voters, we have a beautiful, state-of-the-art Central Library, we have beautiful facilities on the west and east side that were just a dream not too long ago, and to be able to have a successful partnership with the success that the Pioneer Library System has had all these years, I just think is worth commemorating and congratulating them on all the work that they've done for the community. And I know they were really challenged during the pandemic and having to be closed for so long when they finally got into a brand-new building, and just the adaptations that the library system has made, just like many other people in Norman, to continue to serve our community in unique and creative ways to still have that connection and to provide the resources that so many of our children needed in Norman during that time. So I just wanted to thank Lisa for her leadership, Caroline Dolworth, Branch Manager at the Norman Central Library, for representing a lot of library staff that are really committed to their communities in our three-county library system. So thank you all.
All right, we will now go back to council comments. We'll start with... Oh, no, we should vote on that first. What do you think? Yeah. All right, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Now, we'll go to council comments. Ward one, Councilmember Studley.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. So first I want to say, I know several of you have reached out, phone calls, emails, regarding the tree canopy that was along on the east side between Lindsay and Boyd. Councilmember Holman did reach out to our forester once we started seeing those trees coming down, and he let us know that he reached out to OEC, and OEC got permission from all of the homeowners to remove the trees. And I know that some of them were bushes, many of them have been there for as long as I can remember, and I've lived here for 40 years. So those bushes were specifically designed not to grow very tall to get into any type of power line, so I know it's really concerning because it protected like as a sound barrier and kind of a shield from 12th Street for those houses. So we are going to talk about this in a future committee meeting. Unfortunately, our forester retired, so we are looking for a new forester, and we are definitely going to consider this tree canopy, looking at some type of ordinance in the future for this. So stay tuned. We have heard you, unfortunately. It was homeowner's approval, OEC got permission, and there's nothing that we can do to fix that, but we can do things to remedy that in the future. Another thing I want to tell you guys about, there is a mutual aid fair coming up on November 20th from 12 to 3 at Irving Rec Center. Red Dirt Collective is putting this on. There's gonna be free groceries, free hygiene products, clothes, books, pet food, free haircuts, free car brake light and bicycle repair, and Norman Parks and Recs will be hosting games for kids out there. Oklahoma People's Party will be giving away lunches, and then me, Brandy Studley, I'm gonna have a town hall at the Irving Rec Center in the gym at 1:00. So if you have any questions or concerns about Ward One or our city in general, please feel free to come and talk to me at that time. I will be there to answer any questions that you have. And there's a few other local volunteer groups, such as St. Francis', that will be out there to pass out dog food, Little Reed Wagon, things like that. So come out, bring your family, check it out. And then the last thing I want to say is just some food for thought. If we invested the money into housing that we're spending on criminalizing homelessness, we would have more housing. Homes, not handcuffs. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ward two, Councilmember Schuler.
Just would like to piggyback off of what Councilmember Studley was saying about the tree canopy. I know that this has been a concern over the last several months for several different places within our community, Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Four. Councilmember Hall and I have been trying to get together with each other to have a town hall meeting specifically about our tree canopy and to work with our city forester and kind of our power companies, but unfortunately, as Councilmember Studley said, our city forester has now left the city, so that position is vacant, and so we're kind of in a little bit of a flux position. And so I know that we are thinking about it, it's something that is on our mind, it's something that we know that we need to address, and that there is some education that needs to happen around this issue for you all. So forthcoming on an Oversight Committee meeting, and so look for that in a future agenda. And if you're interested in that, we'd love to hear from you about what you would like to hear. So that's all I have.
Speaking of oversight, that is this Thursday's meeting, which is canceled because of Veterans Day. Thank you. Councilmember Lynn, Ward three.
I just want to say Happy Veterans Day to all those that have served coming up this week. We appreciate your service, and even tomorrow, even to your Marines coming from an Army guy, happy birthday tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you for your service, Councilmember Lynn and Councilmember Tortorello. All right, Ward four, Councilmember Hall.
So I have several things tonight. First of all, I want to remind everyone who is already registered for the paint collection event...
So I have several things tonight. First of all, I want to remind everyone who is already registered for the Paint Collection Event that will be held this Saturday, November 13th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at Reeves Park. You have to be registered to participate at this point. And I've had several questions of, oh, can we still go? And the answer is, to accommodate all those who've already signed up, you must be registered to participate in that event. As Mayor Clerk said, the Oversight Committee, which is normally held on the second Thursday of every month, is canceled this month as we observe Veterans Day. And starting at the December Oversight Committee, we will begin making time for a monthly report on our continuing efforts to reduce homelessness in Norman. This Friday, November 12th, there is so much going on in the heart and soul of Norman in Ward four, beginning with the grand opening of the Cleveland County Project, The Well. It begins at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, but there is a full slate of activities that will be happening. The Well is Cleveland County's transformational project. It's a new wellness hub for Norman. And I encourage everyone to get out and take a look at it. They'll be participating in the Art Walk this year. And they have a steady stream of activities going on all day into the night. And this is a big project that is now located in Norman Center City. So we're so happy to welcome The Well to Ward four and hope everybody can take advantage of their grand opening on Friday and go take a peek. On Friday, November 12th, in addition to all of that going on all day, it's our Second Friday Art Walk in the Walker Arts District in historic downtown Norman. And also on Friday, November 12th, at 5:00 p.m. at Andrews Park, there's a new public art installation that is being recognized on Friday afternoon at 5:00, and it's called "In Their Words." And it's an art installation by Oklahoma's own M.J. Alexander, made possible by the Norman Forward 1% for Art Program. And it invites visitors to explore the pathways of Andrews Park and discover the observations, wisdom, and humor of those who have walked the streets of Norman over the years, immortalizing selected quotations from Normanites sandblasted into the park sidewalks. Had an opportunity this afternoon to go take a sneak peek. And I think you will enjoy seeing the words of so many people who have made a big difference and have left their mark in Norman. And this is just one of the examples of their words that have been sandblasted onto the sidewalks and passed around Andrews Park from our own Dr. George Henderson. "None of us are free until all of us are free, and that has nothing to do with color and has everything to do with believing." So I hope you all can go take advantage of that. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Ward five, Councilmember Tortorello.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and echo Councilman Lynn's thoughts on Veterans Day this weekend. You know, he's a fellow veteran and so am I. And we have veterans that served on council in the past and veterans out in the audience today. And you know, this is one day that I know we recognize veterans, but it should be every day. And I know this town, Norman, this state does that every day, and I appreciate that. And you know, go out to the parades this Thursday and this weekend. They're out there for you. They're out there to showcase what these veterans have done and the wards they fought in. Listen to the stories. And you'll be amazed at what these men and women have done in their lifetime. So that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Ward six, Councilmember Foreman.
I was just gonna comment on Veterans Day. Also, thank you to all the veterans in our community who have served and also to their families because they sacrificed just as much. Congratulations to all the Ward six appointees to their respective boards and commissions tonight. And then on the East Side Library, I just wanted to note that it is in Ward six and it's a gem for us and that we really love it. And my final comment is to Jason, thank you for already having the Christmas stuff up. Merry Christmas. It is Christmas season already, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I had the opposite feeling when I drove up to City Hall today. Councilmember Holman, Ward seven.
Thank you. I also definitely want to encourage everybody to attend the Veterans Parade if you have a chance and visit the Veterans Memorial at Reeves Park as well on Veterans Day or any day, really. It's something worth visiting in our city. If you haven't been over there, check it out. Norman and Oklahoma have had one of, if not the highest per capita number of people served in the military based in our population compared to other states. So definitely appreciate everybody's service. And would also, in regard to trees, would point out a post that Visit Norman made just yesterday or the day before about how much they love Norman streets. I think it was a picture of College Street or La Homa or one of those. And the thing that makes that street so beautiful is the tree canopy and the fully grown, mature trees that surround all the houses and the changing colors and all those things. And in my personal opinion, the presence of trees like that on property make it so much more valuable than a residential property or any property that has no trees on it, in my eyes, has very little value if I were looking to purchase it. A property with no trees would be worth almost nothing, in my opinion. A property that's got fully mature trees that protect it from the sun in the summertime, protect your car and your house from elements like hail, which the trees around my house have protected my house and the windows and my car from these recent hail events, thankfully. But just to point out that those are, it really does matter. And when we have large sections of a tree line that have been in a place for over 40 years, all removed at once for no real explanation that we can understand, they were not interfering with any power lines and they've been there for decades. And so to see that type of thing removed really reduces the value visually and, I think monetarily, in my opinion, of an area. So I'm looking forward to hearing more from our friends at the utility companies about what were the reasons that they had to do that and what are we gonna do in its place? Because what's left is a lot of rusted old chain-linked fences that have been hidden behind a tree line forever. And now they're completely exposed. The ground is all barren. And you know, it's not a great-looking feeling. I've actually told Councilmember Studley this afternoon that I've been actively avoiding driving down that section of 12th for the last two months because I'm just kind of sick about, I don't even want to see it. Like, so I've just been not even driving that way. And so I hope we can get some answers sometime in the future about that because it's very important to our community. Also want to let everybody know that Community Planning and Transportation Committee for this month is canceled because it falls on Thanksgiving. In CPTC, we normally talk about the Public Transit Ridership Report every month. If you're interested in the public transit system in Norman, how many people ride it, how much money we spend on it, what future investments and changes we're looking at making, we talk about all those things in this committee. It's open to everybody, and I encourage you all to attend or watch it on YouTube if you get a chance. We also talk about things like campus corner parking, protected bike lanes, things like that. Any type of transportation infrastructure that you might be interested in, CPTC is the committee where we try to hash those things out. And so definitely encourage you to attend that committee and reach out to any of us if you have questions, comments, or things you'd like to add. And then the last thing I have is just in the spirit of the Small Business Saturday and the comments from the mayor about sales tax revenue and how we're the only state that, in the whole country, where state law limits cities to operating on sales tax only. So in Oklahoma, we have to pay for police and fire and Public Works and the general operations of our city government through sales tax revenue only. And that's a real volatile revenue source that can go up and down based on consumer trends and big-box retail stores that go bankrupt like Toys R Us or Sears, things like that that are beyond our control. It pits cities against each other trying to see which one can lure the next big-box retail store or things like that. It can be hurtful to small businesses when cities get into that type of tug-of-war over who can get those types. And one thing that former councilmember Dan Quinn in Ward eight used to say after his, after he made his public comments in every meeting, he always would say, "And be sure to shop Norman." So if you're gonna go out and buy stuff, do it in Norman, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward eight, Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, just like many of my colleagues have already said, just want to show my appreciation and respect for all the veterans out there. I truly am thankful for the service that you've made and sacrifices. Yeah, and I also just want to share my adoration for the public library system and also for our local small businesses. I don't think Norman would be the community we are without those entities. So go shop Norman.
All right. I've got a few announcements. First, I want to say thank you to the staff of the water treatment plant. And Mr. Mattingly over there, our Director of Utilities, we had a wonderful tour of the improvements of the water treatment plant that I hadn't seen since I had last toured it. We had over 40 people attend. And Representative Rosecrance came, which was awesome. I appreciated his interest. It's a unique area, given that we're the only city in this state that has to vote on the creation or raising of a public utility. So I'm glad he got educated on that. And if you are interested in touring Water Treatment Plant, Water Reclamation Facility, contact the staff. They do amazing work. They're happy to share it with you, and you pay for it. So definitely get out there and engage in that very important part of local government. I want to give a shout out to my pals at the Among Friends Activity Center. My students from the J.C. Penney Leadership Program and I visited today and had a wonderful time coloring. We had the City of Norman coloring books and some OU coloring sheets and the ones from the Ruby Grant Public Art Ribbon Cutting. So that was a lot of fun today. In addition to the ribbon cutting on Friday, we have a topping-out ceremony. Still not entirely sure what that is, even though I've been to a couple of them, for the emergency center from Highway nine of the expansion of the Norman Regional Health System at 4:00 p.m. on Thursday. So it's been so exciting to see our community invest in expanding health care in our community, especially in a state where it seems to be shrinking in other areas. So very proud of that and excited to see that continue on. Also, as we get closer to Thanksgiving, don't forget about the Turkey Trot 5K here in Norman. Proceeds benefit Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I will be participating this year. If you would like to beat me, there you go. It's not a fast runner. Could be rewarding for you. Then I also want to thank my council members for donating to the CCFI Holiday Wishes. We do that every year, and we're able to provide gifts for at least three different children in the Norman community. So you guys rock. Thank you so much for helping me continue that tradition. And then the last thing I want to mention is I will be holding a State of the City on Tuesday, October 30th. Will begin at 5:00 p.m. before the council meeting. Did I say? Yeah. I have no time machine. It would be November 30th. Sorry, I gave blood today. Yeah. Anywho, it'll be a great update on what we've accomplished over the past year and where we're going because we have done way more than just survive here in Norman, Oklahoma. And we have the hardest-working staff in the state of Oklahoma, and I'm excited to highlight many of the great things that both staff and council are working on. Additionally, Governor Johnson from the Absentee Shawnee Tribe will be joining me. He will also give an update on what the tribe is up to here in Norman, Oklahoma, if you didn't realize that we actually have a tribe within Norman city limits. So November 30th at 5:00 p.m. before the council meeting, I hope you will join us. And of course, it will be on YouTube if you are unable to join us in person. All right. With that, we will move to the non-consent items. Item 24, Ordinance 2122-7, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Section 22-431.2 of Article 12 of Chapter 22 to establish and further define additional standards for small cell applications and providing for the severability thereof. There is currently a motion on the floor to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section, made by Councilmember Holman and seconded by Councilmember Peacock. I'd like to recognize Heather Poole, our Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Clerk. We have modified our presentation somewhat since everyone's seen it about three times now. Thought we'd make it a little different. Basically, we are trying to explain why the substitution. So we're trying to explain why the substitution ordinance has been reached. Again, the first round of amendments to the ordinance was after meeting with one of the vendors, specifically AT&amp;T. After further meetings, we've reached yet another round of agreement which leads to the substitution ordinance. Has a little bit of background to keep everybody up to speed. The small cell is related to the 5G expansions. And FCC really has been promoting this, so there is a very limited sliver of rights for cities to provide some constraints on that expansion. Again, those limited areas are the city can regulate the placement, construction, and modifications of current wireless facilities. We can require fair and reasonable compensation for the permits for those. And we can ensure that our public right-of-ways are still being managed and open and accessible. What we cannot do is we can't prohibit co-location on OG&E light poles. We can't require a lot of documentation. It has to be reasonably related to determining whether the request meets the city's code requirements. And we can't use regulations to prohibit the provision of wireless services, and we can't discriminate between providers. The initial regulation was adopted in November of 2018, and it sought to strike a balance between the FCC regulations and state laws and to ensure that we are complying with both of those. It is a permitting process that is compliant with the very narrow timeframes that are federally allowed. The siding standards were adopted in conformance with current state law and with the expectation that at some point, we're going to have multiple providers. At this point, we've only had one provider making applications, but there's nothing to say we won't receive others later. It also sets spacing standards for the poles. There are two types of installations. One is co-location that's on poles that already exist and also new poles. And each requires an engineering analysis to be provided to the city. We again have only had one provider approach the city with applications, which was AT&amp;T, who submitted 78 small cell applications. Of those, only four were successful. And part of that was concerns about our spacing requirements, as well as requests from the city for additional information on the other 74, which hadn't been provided at that time. The Oversight Committee discussed possible ordinance changes to the 2018 ordinance in June, and the full council discussed those changes in July and at the prior meeting. An example of some of the concerns that the city has is one of the applications, the initial 74, was for this location, which, as you can see, already had two poles in front of their residence. And if you pull back, there's a street sign to your left as well. The other example is the location with the blue dot. There are four existing streetlights near that location. Other cities have approached this. Bixby's, which the distancing and the ounce, so to speak, on being required to co-locate on a currently existing pole were based off of Bixby's ordinances. They have it 500 feet from another, that a new wireless structure needs to be a minimum of 500 feet from an existing wireless support structure located on the same side of the street. Jinx has a similar requirement. Stillwater's also requires they be located a minimum of 500 feet from any other small cell supporting structure on the same side of the feet of the street. The Broken Air Ordinance does not have a minimum spacing requirement, but Mustangs has that no wireless facility may be placed within 100 feet of another small cell wireless. So again, Norman has tried to approach the ordinance amendments with an eye toward both resident concerns, current providers that have approached us concerns, and also the expectation that there may well be other providers coming. One of the questions that was raised today by AT&amp;T was, in light of the city putting in a clause that if a co-location does not work for structural reasons or interference with other wireless structures or an unreasonable lease requirement from the owner of that pole, that they can show other good cause, and that is determined by a city staff. that is determined by a city staff. So the concern was, well, if the city staff overrules what we feel are legitimate good causes, do we have any appeal? Within our ordinance, under 6C86, there is a right to go to the Board of Adjustment if a request for a pole structure is denied. So city staff does feel that there is a due process avenue for providers who feel that co-location exception is not acknowledged. Are there any questions from?
Okay, are there any questions from council? Councilwoman Hall?
I just want to make sure I understand what is on the floor right now versus what has been presented in our staff report. So I believe what the staff has offered as a revision or a substitute ordinance, and I just want to make sure I know what, what we're voting on. So my question for Ms. Poole is, I think you addressed it in some of your remarks, but if you could just summarize what the difference is between what we were considering the last time we discussed this, and the changes that were made, and the collaboration that's taken place between the City of Norman and AT&amp;T?
Right. So the prior amendments had listed out that we had added that they were not to interfere with any, encroach on any walkways or pedestrian right-of-ways. We had also included the language from the Bixby ordinance where if you were wanting to put up a new pole, you had to, the provider or the vendor had applicant had to provide information setting out that the, the poles within five hundred feet of a utility pole or another wireless structure, some similar type structure, would not be structurally sound, or would interfere with the telecommunications devices already installed on that pole, or they weren't able to enter into a reasonable lease. The changes have added the "for good cause shown" as determined by staff to those outs, so to speak, of being required to co-locate. And we have left, there was a lot of discussion of trying to reach a compromise amount on the five-hundred-foot radius, but staff feels like that "for good cause shown" would be that category where if a provider came forward and explained either the equipment wouldn't work there, or there was landscape interference, or there were buildings nearby that precluded them from that five-hundred-foot radius, that that six, the 6C7E "for good cause shown" would allow them the ability to explain why they needed an exception besides the fact that they couldn't get a lease, or it wasn't appropriate height, or it would cause interference or structural. So that is basically the big change that we included that. And we also included that the pole should not, there were concerns that were raised by one of the council members of specifically the situation that you see in this picture, that if it was near, that if you had other, or that if you, you could not encroach sidewalks or walkways, but we also added or place unreasonably near another similar structure to address a council member's concern about these specific situations. And the way we had done our revisions previously, we felt did not really give staff any ability to deny a new structure in this specific scenario, whereas saying it's unreasonably near a similar structure would allow us to deny that.
So the way I currently understand it and what's before us tonight, which is a change from what we considered two weeks ago, there's been quite a bit of discussion between staff and AT&amp;T. There's also been quite a bit of discussion at the subcommittee level, the study session level before this, this was brought forth. And so it sounds like that we're at a place now where we are still maintaining what was the consensus coming out of the study session, but also allowing a path for those more unusual possibilities that may occur, that there is a path now that AT&amp;T could pursue, or any other provider, because I want to make sure this is an ordinance that works for any provider that comes to Norman. So it sounds like we've provided a path, and there is also a path to the Board of Appeal or the Board of Adjustment if we're in conflict with a staff decision. So it sounds like we've tried to mediate and get to a point where we still are basically preserving the decision-making that's already happened, but still allowing a path for an unusual circumstance.
City certainly feels, city staff certainly feels that we've tried. Now, you'll be hearing from AT&amp;T later, so I can't speak for them, but we have tried to, again, address situations like this that were raised as a concern by council, as well has, again, that 6C7E category to allow exactly. If there's a unique setting that those other exceptions didn't address, that hopefully that good cause.
And I think the other thing I, I wanted to address that we have discussed previously is the fact that as this ordinance language was written, we did rely on not only other municipalities that have a successful ordinance in place, as far as we can tell, but also from the direction of the Oklahoma Municipal League and their work on this topic as well.
That's correct. Our original ordinance was basically based off of the format that was set up from the OML committee, of which there were small cell providers on that committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holman?
My questions were answered. Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to substitute the ordinance for the one that they have presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor, I guess, do we have any comments regarding this motion? Questions regarding this motion? Okay. All right. The motion on the floor is to substitute the ordinance for the one we're voting on.
I'm sure we know what we're doing here.
Very technical. Yep. Substituting the ordinance for the one from staff that we just got a presentation on. All right, everyone's clear. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. The ordinance passes unanimously.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered?
Yes, Mayor, we have John Gray.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's John Gray. I'm Assistant Vice President, Senior Legal Counsel for AT&amp;T. I know you're, in the past, you've worked with Jason Constable. He's been our spokesperson. However, Jason had a conflict, so tonight he was not able to make the meeting, so I'm filling in for him. My comments will be brief. First of all, let me say that I want to thank the staff here and you guys for willing to listen to our, our concerns. While we didn't get everything we want, at least it's something we can begin to, to work with. And where we can't, you know, we're unable to work on this, the ordinance, we will continue to work with staff, and unfortunately, if, if all else fails, we just won't serve that area. I noticed that, you know, they, there have been a couple cities that you mentioned there that have past ordinances. Those cities that don't have the language, some like you guys will be looking at this evening, we're not going there. The City of Stillwater, we're not going to Stillwater. We have no plans to go back to the City of Stillwater, because their ordinances are owners, and we don't believe, well, also, we believe they're contracted to the federal act as well. So those cities that, that do not have positive ordinances, we won't serve. And you'll notice tonight that, you know, this whole process, it's been, AT&amp;T's been the only one here pushing this. The other wireless carriers, your, your T-Mobile, Verizon, they have not come forward. They're sitting back waiting, letting us to do the work for them. But with that being said, AT&amp;T, you know, being a good steward, we will make every effort to work within the confines of the ordinance that you guys are looking at this evening. And one of the things I wanted to do is just make sure you guys understand what you're doing this evening. All of discussion thus far has been on 5G. 5G is just the tip of the knife as to the technology. We've already started working on 6G. There are 6G standards are being worked on right now among industry participants. 6G will blow you away, much like when we went from four to five, six is even further. What you're doing this evening, you're laying the groundwork for six to be added on top of five. And so, you know, when the time comes for six to be rolled out, because we have something that we believe we can work with, Norman will be in the running for the, the 6G when it comes out. Those communities in which do not have ordinances we can work under, they'll always lag behind. Six works off of five. If you don't get five, you can't get to six. So, you know, we will, what you're doing this evening, you're laying the groundwork for that. And so, just on behalf of AT&amp;T, we want to thank you guys for working with us, thank you guys for listening to us and being open-minded. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
I appreciate you coming today, tonight, and speaking to us. I just want to state that as a councilmember, I definitely appreciate where you're coming from and your company, and I do appreciate our ability to get this service, given how vital having Wi-Fi access is and reliable Wi-Fi access that allows people to tune into our meetings and stream things like that. And I'm absolutely open, at any time, to come back and revisit this if we find out that this, what we've, what we pass is, if it's not working, I'm definitely open to adjusting how we do things if we need to in the future. So I really appreciate you, again, coming, and like I said, I think we're open to making changes as we go if, if it turns out that we need to.
Thank you. You know, that, that reminds me of the, when I once heard an astronaut say, you know, when you shoot a rocket to the moon, you got to keep making adjustments along the way. And I appreciate, you know, your comments and saying you're willing to make the adjustments as we move along the way.
Thank you.
All right. And sir, I think I mentioned last time that Norman is a special place. So I appreciate AT&amp;T continuing to come to the table and work with us to make sure that we're equal partners in a very vital service to our residents, because it is our responsibility to ensure a variety of things in their everyday lives, from internet service to how their sidewalks look. So thank you for that, and I hope we can continue to work together as technology continues to speed up and improve, and we can be partners in improving the lives of Normanites. All right.
Thank you.
Are there any final comments from council? Councilwoman Foreman?
No.
Nope. All right. Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading as substituted. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. Adopt the ordinance upon second reading as substituted. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance as substituted on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. What? Oh.
Oh.
Should we just wait a minute?
You can, if you want.
Well, all right. Well, let's just continue on.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading as substituted passes unanimously. Councilmember Peacock has stepped out of the room momentarily.
Thank you. Item 25, Consideration of Adoption/Rejection Amendment and/or Postponement of Ordinance 2122-4 Upon Second and Final Reading, to Grant Special Use for Municipal Uses in the A2 Rural Agricultural Area Located at 3,000 East Robinson Street. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Nathan Maddenwald, Utilities Engineer, to make a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. Nathan Maddenwald, City of Norman Utilities Department. Also with us, we have Ricky RC with Park Hill Cardinal, and Brian McKinney from Eli, who's the contractor that will be doing the installation. So, so just real brief, this is at 3,000 East Robinson. This is our water treatment facility. It's a thirty-six acre lot. Really what we're trying to do is bring it up to current standards. We've just kind of used the land in the past, but now we're trying to put the special use for municipal use over it, not changing the underlying zoning would remain. A2 just allows to do this project we're looking to do, where we're going to put a solar array on the facility. So just kind of briefly running through some of the slides that we had at Planning Commission. So you can see to the west is, that's actually state land. To the, to the northwest is, what we've got is A1, but I believe that's where we also are doing special use, where we're doing the Emergency Operations Center and the Line Maintenance Facility. Straight north is the Frost Creek Residential Development, and then generally to the east and south is A2 as well. This is just another view showing the subject tract that we're looking at and the uses around it. It's a, it's a pretty open area out there. So this yellow line is showing our, our tract, and then the green is showing where we're proposing to put in a, a solar array that will offset some of the energy usage for the water treatment facility. So everything that we're doing is inside our existing fence line. So this is a picture looking south at our water treatment facility, our main office building. This is looking north from our water treatment plant at the Frost Creek Development. This is looking east down Robinson, and this one is looking west down Robinson. So, so here's a picture of showing the arrays that we're going to be putting there on the site. So this is at the northeast corner of the property. The long rectangles that you see there are where the solar arrays would be. You can see here, we actually modified the site so we're outside of the floodplain. We had looked at potential being in there, but the grading and the number of panels that we needed to utilize that site, it made sense to lay it out the way we did. Here showing where we're crossing the channel there. We would have supports that would be outside the main flow path, but we would be spanning the panels over the top of channel. So just to provide a context of what this installation would look like, it, it'll be real similar to the one that Norman Public Schools just really recently did in northeast Norman. We would have panels that were separated by about twelve feet, and the area would be revegetated. So we've completed the drainage study, or excuse me, Park Hill's completed drainage study. There's no real increase in impervious area, because the panels will fall off onto the ground. That water will be there on the ground, and then it would sheet flow across the site as it has in the past. We did obtain a floodplain permit, just because we had a little bit of grading there, and then, and then interconnection agreements will be forthcoming with the utility company. We'll do an earth change permit and a building permit. And with that, oh, sorry. And then here is just showing, you know, what the number of modules we're going to have at the site is a little over thirteen hundred. It'll be about a six hundred KW facility. All the panels will be oriented north-south and have a twenty-five degree tilt on them. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you have, or defer to the experts to know a little bit more about it.
All right. Councilwoman Holman?
Thank you. Yeah, my only real question was just about the impervious surface. Wasn't sure if underneath there was going to be concrete pads, or if it was just going to be vegetative, like you mentioned.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hall?
Wanted to follow up on one of the comments that you made, because you said you did get a floodplain permit, but you also redesigned where you were going to install. So do you actually need one with the current?
I think we could have actually not got the floodplain permit, but it was a, it was kind of a fluid design process. We were laying stuff out at the site at the same time. First rendition we had, we were more in the floodplain than we are now.
So you do have the option if for some reason you would need to?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peacock?
Thank you. Along those same lines of impervious surfaces, are there any additional structures or roads on the site?
No, we aren't adding anything to this particular site.
Okay.
Just utilizing everything that's existing.
All right. And I don't know if you can answer this, but with the Norman Public Schools, OEC, this one, and then the water reclamation facility, is that four solar arrays in the City of Norman? Do we have more? We have at least four at this point.
We have the one that we did at the UV that was a small package one at our wharf, so we're adding to that one, and then the two we're doing here in the Norman Public Schools. I'm not familiar with the other one.
All right.
Oh, we see one on I-35. You're right. Yeah.
Just wanted to point that out to anyone paying attention. That's four. All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. Adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Okay, this is the same item? Reclamation. Ah, gotcha. Okay, item 26, consideration of approval, rejection, postponement, or amendment of ordinance 2122-5 upon second and final reading to grant special use for municipal uses in the A2 rural agricultural district for property located at 3,500 Jenkins Avenue. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. I'd once again like to recognize Mr. Maddenwald, our utilities engineer, to make a presentation.
Experts for this one as well. So, this one, this one is very similar. This one's just a little bit different in that we have a little bit more area here that's, that we're doing. We're trying to encompass the entire parcel of land there outside of a lease that we have with asphalt companies, so I'll go down a little bit. So, 115 acres, existing zoning will remain. We're just putting a special use on it to do municipal uses. So, showing the tract here, the existing zoning is A2, putting special use on it. To the east is A2, to the north is other city facilities, and then to the west is A2 as well, and then we have the Canadian River there to the south and other municipalities. Showing land use out here, this is obviously a very open area as well, a lot of low-density development to the east, further high residential or higher density residential to the east. But generally, this is a lot of city facilities where we're, we're looking at putting the special use zoning, so. So, just to kind of highlight some of the keys facilities we have here, so we have our transfer station that's shown there on just the east side of Chautauqua, and then Bratcher Miner comes down. Our compost facility's on the south side of the road. If you keep going north, you have the water reclamation facility there on the north side. Where we're looking to put the solar facility there is, is in a floodplain area, south of Bratcher Miner, west of Jenkins. You also have the existing police firing range that's there, which no improvements are being proposed, the former landfill further to south, and then the compost facility. That's kind of the one change on this one that we're looking at, where we're looking to put a scale house facility there as well. So, we wanted to address the special zoning at one time for this whole area. So, here's a picture of standing on Jenkins, looking, looking to the east, showing what that property looks like. This is looking north along Jenkins, so to your, to your left would be where the solar panels would be. This is looking south toward, down Jenkins toward the police firing range, so to the right would be where your solar panels would be. And then this is looking west, where the solar array would be. So, to the right is another similar picture showing all the solar panels that we'd be putting on site. It's a little bit bigger right here. We're looking to generate more power because we have higher uses there at the water reclamation facility, and we have a little bit more land available to put that. So, one of the key changes on this one was we are looking to change some of the existing drives, so. So, currently, apologies for that, so currently there's two drives for the oil well facility. The picture on the left, the oil well comes in there between the tanks and its pump, and then it actually turns north and comes back there to Bratcher Miner. We, we like to use that space for solar arrays, and we also thought it was a safer egress for this, for the oil company because now they'll be able to come into the site, they'll be able to egress off onto Jenkins and then go north, and then that way, when they're leaving the site, they'll be able to just pull straight through without having to make a left turn or a right turn without having to worry about cross traffic. So, we thought that was better for all parties, and it gives us a little bit more space. Our civil engineer, Park Hill, looked at the amount of gravel drive that we were removing from the site, both here on the north side and on the south side, because there was a former drive on the south side that was accessing the police firing range, which is no longer in use. We're putting solar array across that, and the net added for the gravel is, it's still a net decrease for the site, so the amount of impervious area we were adding over here for the solar array didn't increase. Similar type of installation, we'll have vegetated ground below the panels. We've completed the drainage study for the solar array and determined that there was no net increase of impervious area for the solar installation. Floodplain permit 644 was approved already. We're here for the special use zoning, and we'll get the following three agreements and permits after that. And now kind of to transition to talk a little bit about the compost facility. So, that red box is showing generally, generally where we were looking to put the new scale house, and the goal with that is just making sure that we're serving our residents cost efficiently in holding commercial companies. We were kind of a cheaper option for them to get rid of tree limbs, and so we're not trying to charge our, our residents. They're still able to bring their debris to us for free, but we also wanted to make sure we're getting cost recovery for companies that are bringing it to us because we're cheaper than a landfill. So, that's what we're looking to do with the compost and scale house, so. So, here's a real quick plan showing that. Not really any changes to the, the south half there, the southwest half. That's an existing ring road that we have around there, and we're looking to put the scale house and scales there. The green would be the scale house, and the red would be the scales that we would like to put in. The area to the, kind of the east, northeast is areas that we've been using, but we do want to have a better gravel road around the outside of that. And then we're preparing, we're not doing it at this time, but we want to have the possibility for doing future co-composting where as land becomes less available to apply bio-sols, we could look at more beneficially using some of that product generated from our wastewater plant. So, we're not doing that yet at this time, so we'd have a lot more discussion on that before we did that, but we're, we're just trying to set the stage for that, so. Just to kind of orient you at that site, so this is standing in the middle of compost facility, so it's what you'd kind of expect. It's a lot of, lot of compost, a lot of mulch, stuff where we have stockpiled, and we got hit, kind of the genesis behind this was the, the big storms that we've had. We had a lot of material that came in that our facility wasn't geared up for, so we wanted to just make sure we're able to help weather that a little bit better. Sorry for that pun. So, sit on the south side, looking north, you can, it's more, more of the same. You can see there's not a ton of impervious area, and the material that's on the site actually is a moisture capturing type of material. So, this is looking east at the compost facility, and, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards. Sorry. This is on the west side, looking east, similar operation there. And then this is north, looking north, and I apologize, you can't really see the, the compost piles. They've actually done a good job of getting their compost prepared and moving the product out of the site, so there's not very many stock or winrows on the site currently, so. We did receive one protest for this overall special use, and so I have that shown on the screen. You can see it there on the map in the bottom right. We did reach out to the protester for this and explain to them the solar array, how we were doing that, where we were vegetating the site, and the amount of work we were doing there on the compost facility, and I cannot speak for Mr. Potts, but I believe he's in agreement that we're, we're bringing pretty good stewards there and utilizing the site in a way that shouldn't impact his facility, so. So, just talking about the drainage for a little bit more in-depth because that was the genesis of the complaint. We're going to have spacing between the, the panels. It's going to be revegetated, so we don't see that we're adding any impervious area because the water will fall to the surface, and then again, sheet flow off as it currently does. For the compost facility, we are still working through the, the design on that, and what we've agreed to do is for the additional impervious area we're adding, we'll, we'll do detention on that in accordance with city standards, but we do not have final numbers on that. Apologize, I had hoped to have that before you today, but we will honor that moving forward. So, a lot more panels here. We're a little over 3,700, 1.7 megawatts almost, and same orientation for the panels. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any, any questions you may have for this particular application ordinance.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Yeah, mine were just exactly about the drainage issue. You know, this area is pretty sensitive, and we've, you know, had some issues lately regarding development in the area, and so I, really, you answered all my questions. I just wanted to say thank you for including all that information and really working to minimize adding any impervious surface to this area if at all possible, so.
Okay.
Very glad to hear that that seems to be the route we're going.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
All right, thank you. Councilor Peacock?
Thanks, yeah. So, I just want to say, highlight something that you said a second ago, and when you said that our services are cheaper than a landfill, is that correct?
Well, previously, we didn't have a mechanism to charge people as they would come into the compost facility, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, if it is, I mean, I just, that's amazing, and I want to think we should be celebrating that fact publicly because that's incredible.
We are, so, I, I can't speak to the full history of it. I mean, I'll try since I wasn't here, but the, the goal from the compost facility from the get-go is to divert waste from going to the landfill and putting it to another beneficial use, so essentially just recycling those materials rather than putting them in the dump. So, the goal was to get those from residents, but as, as it kind of went over time, we didn't have people there to police it, and so companies saw that as a easier way to get disposal for those materials rather than pay a landfill, so.
That makes sense. Well, I'm still impressed.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hall?
So, I just wanted to ask about the scale house. So, is this part of the project now or something that you're looking at in the future?
It is something that we're incorporating as part of the special use.
Okay.
But we still do have to go through the full permitting process, so.
Okay.
Yes, we are requesting that as part of the special.
Okay, so you're just including that now because it is going to be coming forward?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, it's basically for the solar array and the scale house at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
And you already have the floodplain permit, which was one of my questions, and you really did a great job of addressing all of the other questions I had that revolve around, again, this very sensitive area. It's in a floodway, floodplain, and I appreciate the intentionality of addressing those things, and I also just want to say that I really appreciate you reaching out to the one protest letter that you did have to basically communicate well with, and address the concerns of the person who raised those issues, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions from council regarding this item, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. If anyone signed up, and we do not, any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 27, consideration of approval, rejection, postponement, or amendment to ordinance 2122-6 upon second and final reading, amending the zoning ordinance regarding off-street parking requirements for residential and multifamily in all office, commercial, and industrial districts, less C3 intensive commercial. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Ms. Jane Hudson, Director of Planning and Community Development, to make a presentation.
Mayor, council, Jane Hudson, planning director. Super excited to bring this forward tonight. I'm finally getting this up here. So, yes, we are looking at amending the parking requirements within the zoning ordinance. City council has directed staff to look at the amendments for the parking regulations for several years. I went, looked, and I mean, it's 2013, I think is the first time we ever brought anything forward. Maybe it was before that, I don't know, that's just what I found. But, so yes, we're looking at amending the requirements that we have in the zoning ordinance right now. We've been to CPTC, we had multiple discussions there about minimum as well as maximum requirements. There's also the EDC, the engineering design criteria, that's still going on right now. We, I don't know which direction that's going to end up, but I mean, it's very possible we could have, you know, some LID stormwater management come out of that for, you know, some of the parking lots that will be coming in. And then at the July 20th council study session, we discussed this again about amend the required to the recommended. You know, I just want to go over a couple of things. You can see some of the changes up there, but a few of the things I want to point out is, I mean, we are going through a transition right now. When we first started talking about this, I talked about how 2020 had been a change for us, and here we are at the end of 2021, so it's just been a continuous change that we've had to work on. You know, we've got the grocery pickup, we've got scooters, we run a bus system now. I mean, there's just so many things that are changing, and taking a look at this parking requirement and making it a recommendation really is a, I think it's a good option for us at this point. We'll see how things work out, but I do, I, I think that that's, that's something that it's a positive move for us. So, for the changes, the proposed changes that we've got, we've got the single and two-family dwellings, which is a single-family home, and the duplex. Those will still be required to have two parking spaces per unit. Fraternities and sororities, we're keeping those at one parking space per accommodation. We all know the location of the fraternities and sororities around residential areas. We don't want that to become a negative impact, so we are keeping that as is. The same thing with mobile home parks and subdivisions, you know, those are very tightly developed areas, so we want to make sure that we keep two parking spaces for those as well. Another change that we're looking at is for apartments and apartment hotels, we were, the requirement was 1.8. We're changing this, and again, this is a recommendation, this is not going to be a requirement, but as a recommendation, 1.2 per dwelling unit. Boarding houses, and we had it at 1.8, we're taking it down to one per rooming unit. Hotels and motels, it was at 1.2, we're taking that down to one parking space per room, and again, this is a recommendation. The remaining uses within the zoning ordinance will have the numbers there that we've had previously. However, we'll just be looking at them as recommendations for those businesses that come in. You know, in, in preparing for this tonight, I, I thought about, we've talked many times about University North Park having large parking lots, other areas having large parking lots, and I thought about the old Target site there on Main Street, you know, when that was Target, even then, the parking lot wasn't full, but when that left, it's essentially taken four businesses to utilize that parking lot now. We've got Mardell's.
Browns.
Hobby Lobby, Browns. We've got a couple vacancies still, you know, still a couple spaces over there, and then we had Chick-fil-A come in and take part of that parking lot, and it's still not full sometimes. So, I just, you know, I was thinking about that, and I think it's a good option at this point, so I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions from council regarding this item? I know we've looked at it thoroughly. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. Just maybe clarifying for the record, you know, what we're trying to do is, in the past, us in many cities have required what some may consider just an arbitrary number of parking spots for places, and that's how we ended up with some of these massive parking lots that aren't even full on Black Friday. And so, what we're trying to do is take, I guess, I don't know, I hate using the word common sense approach, but just kind of a more approach that allows us to assess the different circumstances that a different, each property might have, and saying you may not need 50 spaces, you may only want this many or need this many, and if you need more of them, there's an option for that too, but that's just kind of the, what we're trying to, trying to achieve here, I think.
I, I agree with you, and if I could add one thing, you know, we all have to remember that the zoning ordinance was adopted in 1954.
Yes.
The parking regulations are essentially the same thing that they were in 1954.
Yeah.
So, yes, I mean, we have to look at, at different options and allowing people to come in and possibly look at, you know, some, some of the smaller developers may not be able to afford what this parking requirement, you know, to buy the square footage or the acreage or whatever. This gives them the opportunity to come in and maybe not have to buy as much land and have the, the smaller businesses come into Norman.
Yeah, I agree fully, and that's a great point. When people ask, why don't we build Main Streets anymore? When people ask, why don't we build Main Streets anymore? Why, how come the built environment doesn't look like Main Street? And it's, has a large part to do because of those parking, parking requirements in that era that you mentioned. That's when we started requiring buildings to be set far back from the street. We started requiring buildings to have to be completely surrounded by parking instead of just having a little bit in the front. And that's kind of what has led us to what we have now, which is everything's real spread out everywhere. You have to drive everywhere. It's hard to walk anywhere. And so I'm hoping that this kind of helps us get back towards a more human scale and, and allow people, small developers to, to kind of figure out what they need for their, for their projects. So thank you very much, Jane.
Absolutely.
All right, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. We have none signed up. Any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall.
Well, this is just a really big night as far as I'm concerned. And I want to thank Ms. Hudson for a very comprehensive staff report that did just a lovely job of summarizing where we've been and where we've ended up tonight. I also want to thank Councilmember Peacock. This is one of the things that was absolutely at the top of the list, and he had a lot of support in moving this forward. But appreciate your due diligence on continuing to keep this on the front burner. So as Ms. Hudson pointed out, we've had the same parking requirements for over 50 years. And oh my, how things have changed in that time. And I was just really thinking about this today because this is a pretty landmark moment for the city of Norman in the direction that we want to go. And so I was just doing a little research today on just the whole evolution of not having parking minimums anymore. And there were just a couple of things that really stuck out. And so this was in an article that said parking requirements make driving less expensive and development more so. Cities get more driving and less housing and less of everything else that makes urbanism worthwhile. And Strong Towns, which is an organization that we have some pretty devout followers that peer on the dais, they talked about three ways that parking requirements really hinder a city. Number one, they rob us of financial productivity and prosperity. Number two, they hinder small business owners, homeowners, developers, and renters. And number three, they fill our city with empty useless space. And their project of Black Friday Parking Day every year is a great example. And we know Councilmember Holman has taken pictures himself of parking lots on Black Friday when they should be full to the max. And even on the most busy shopping day of the year, they're filled with empty unused asphalt and not that many cars. So the other aspect of this that I think is so important to talk about is just the, the impervious surface aspect of this, of asphalt and concrete that we have poured all over town that really detracts from our ability to address our stormwater issues, which are serious. And we talked about this many times from the dais. We have millions of dollars of capital projects to remedy stormwater. And the more that we can be intentional about not having parking spaces that we really don't need, the better off we are as we look to the future to try to solve our stormwater issues. And then finally, the last thing I want to say is, I was also struck by quotes from two leaders in the field of planning that are very well-known to lots of people in, in the profession. And these quotes are both from 1961. So the first one is from Louis Mumford, and he said, "The right to access every building in a city by a private motor car in an age when everyone owns such a vehicle is actually the right to destroy a city." And Jane Jacobs said, "Parking lots are border vacuums, inactive spaces that dent everything around them." So the fact that we have gotten this far and we're about to take this step tonight for what the future of our city is going to look like, I'm really happy to be able to support this and be a part of this vote tonight.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, I couldn't, can't really say it much better than what's been said by my colleagues already. But I just will add that, you know, when you see all those unused parking spaces out there, just think of the lost sales tax collections that that would yield. And so that's honestly what gets me so excited about this, this whole initiative is that, you know, it opens up a whole range of redevelopment opportunities. Just think what you could do over at, at Nobu Parkway or around Sooner Mall, or just, you know, reclaiming some of these massive parking lots. I just, you know, I really think that our lack of walkability in this city is directly tied to the space in between our places, and that's directly tied to the amount of parking we have. So I couldn't be more thrilled to have Norman be the, you know, the leader in the state on this one. And I think we've written a pretty nice playbook for other communities to follow. Thank you again to all my colleagues, and thank you to staff especially. You guys are great.
I agree. I will add my thanks to you, councilmember, for helping lead the charge in committees. Same thing with Councilmember Holman and staff as well. But tonight, on top of these amazing solar arrays that we're putting in on municipal sites, we are looking to the Norman of the future, not holding on to the Norman of the past. And I think that is fantastic, and I do hope other Oklahoma cities will follow suit. So thank you all for your vision and staff for helping us achieve it. Okay, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So members, you may cast your votes.
The motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now on to miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Do we have anyone signed up, Madam Clerk?
Hi, I'm Dan Munson from Ward 6. So it's my perception that the city's vehicle fleet has taken a pounding from the last two hailstorms. And I'd like the city to consider expanding covered parking. I know that's easier said than done. But when we're looking at new construction or major renovations, I'd like us to consider adding covered parking. I don't know what the cost is going to be to repair all those vehicles. My guess is the city doesn't even know how much it's going to cost to repair all those vehicles. We have another mechanism. That mechanism is this infrastructure bill that was just passed. Part of that infrastructure bill includes solar. And so what's really common out west is covered parking that also doubles as a, a solar, a power. And so I would like for us to consider this for upcoming infrastructure projects. I think we could probably put in a decent amount of covered parking. We'd be able to protect our vehicles from hail. We'd be able to generate power. We'd be able to reduce our operating costs. The next thing that I'd like to talk about is the emergency shelter. And so October of last year, we said that there was going to be 40 beds in the emergency shelter. And that facility is 5,500 square feet. There's approximately 4,500 square feet in that facility. The CDC has very specific guidelines for separation of beds. It's six feet. They recommend a head-to-toe configuration for those beds. So 4,500 square feet, you do some simple math, we should be able to get 55 beds in that facility with no problem at all. The winter months are coming. It's going to be cold out when you get people from outside into our emergency shelter. So I'd like for us to evaluate the capacity of that. Let's maximize our investment. We're spending $23,900 a month to run that emergency shelter. Let's maximize that investment by putting more beds in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no other miscellaneous comment, this meeting is adjourned.